All right, then, I'm going to continue. As you know, Jesse had to refuse himself as a client. The next item on our agenda is Overlook Industries, LLC. We're seeking a special permit to establish a new use as a general manufacturing use, not commonly considered hazardous or noxious in existing building. Formal use of cannabis dispensary and manufacturing facility with limited and/or minor exterior building and site changes. Looking for the representatives, are you for the representatives? Yes?
Yes.
Please start by introducing your team and tell us all about what's going on.
All right, thank you. I'm Rebecca Tebow from Dory Wallace, Hillary Murphy, attorney for Overlook Industries. Overlook Industries, Inc. is the applicant. John Moran is here representing the applicant. He's the president and CEO. And related to that, the property owner is Atomic Real Estate, LLC, of which John is also the principal. Jason Newman is here from Eden Architects, and that's my colleague, Izani Castro. And as you just heard, Tony Capaceini is joining us remotely from the eastern part of the state, from Hays Engineering. And so Tony will speak a little bit about the site plan. I think John, Jason, Tony, and I will be the primary speakers. So I won't repeat what you just said, why we're here for the requesting a special permit for the use of general manufacturing, but the use is to be conducted at 195 North Hampton Street. This parcel is split zoned, so you have part of it in highway business. The portion that's in highway business is just the parking lot, which serves the principal use. The principal use will be conducted within the existing building, which is about 15,500 square feet, located on 3.1 acres. Two points that I will go back to throughout this presentation, so I apologize in advance for possibly repeating myself, but I think it's important to keep in mind is that this use is not used to East Hampton. I was prepared to tell you that it's been occurring for about a decade in East Hampton, Overlook Industries, but then John pulled me out of the way, and he's been here for over 20 years, including at Mr. Bundy's site in Eastwood Building when he started. So right now, Overlook operates at 193 North Hampton Street, which is just next door, accessed through the post office driveway, and that is in the highway business district zoning. And I don't think I finished what I said about 195 North Hampton Street. The proposed use of general manufacturing should occur at 195 North Hampton is in the industrial zone, it is so industrial. So the use is not new. We have a known quantity here. The only new thing is the fact where the site where the use will be conducted, and there will be no changes to the exterior of the site, and there are minimal changes to the facade of the building itself. That is all, we'll address all that in the application. The site was extensively reviewed when it was developed about four years ago. It was before this board for use as a cannabis facility, and I just use that term generally, a retail facility and a cultivation site is what it was permitted for at that time. And so the reason I bring that up and why I think that is relevant is just because the building at that time and the whole site was extensively renovated, and the building, a portion of the building is also new. And so you'll hear me say X, Y, and Z criteria. First of all, they might not be applicable in this case because there are no exterior changes for John's use for Overlook's use, but also any concerns were appropriately addressed at that time. And I hope you'll agree with that. So a little bit of history of that site and use permitting is that that permitting for the prior owner occupant occurred in about March 2019, and the property was developed between March 2019 and mid-2021. It was, those changes made at that time were demolition of a then-existing building, reuse and renovation of the building that we have here now, extensive site landscaping, which included installation of a solid wood fence around the property's entire perimeter, which speaks to some of the buffer, a physical buffer, as well as installation of landscaping and plantings to create a vegetative buffer. And they also removed at that time significant amount of impervious surface area and upgraded the access drive to provide clearer points of entry and exit from North Hampton Street. I'm not sure if they installed the access road to industrial drive, but there is now an access road to that, to the property at 195 North Hampton Street off Industrial Parkway. I might say Drive a couple times, so forgive me. That site at that time was developed in accordance with the plans, and Tony will touch upon this a little bit later. It was open to the public in July 2021 and closed in January 2023. The proposed use for Overlook is general manufacturing, and under your table of uses, general manufacturing is a use not commonly considered hazardous or noxious. Here we have a facility that's primarily for light industry and the manufacture or assembly of a product, including, and I'm just taking this from your definition, and I think this is where we fit in, fabrication and assembly. And your definitions under the zoning bylaws further characterize manufacturing by describing certain products that might be made, certain materials that might be used, and the processes that might occur in connection with that manufacturing use. I'm going to ask John in a minute to talk a little bit more about that, but I'll just summarize quickly that here we have a manufacturing use of the products. Basically, what they're doing is they're creating or fabricating components that are used by the pharmaceutical industry, which are then used to prepare and deliver certain pharmaceuticals, biopharmaceuticals, think injectables, like what our vaccines come through. They create fully molded, single-use fluid path pumps and manhole assemblies and stainless steel filling needles.
That was a mouthful.
Yeah, thank God. I felt I'm reading it, and John can talk. I almost asked John, I was like, he should actually bring these things to.
I had thought about a little show until I know.
The manufacturing in terms of the materials that are used, we have steel, silicone, and plastic. So silicone is not hazardous. In the, actually, I might not be right about steel, but in the CNC room, you have plastic rods that come in, and then those are processed by the equipment.
CNC is a computer number, right? It's the.
Yeah, it's all CNC machinery that fabricates the parts of the raw material.
Sorry, please continue.
Oh, that's okay. We like questions. And then the processes that we're doing are really design. I mean, there is a design component to this. John works directly with pharmaceutical companies to help them create the product that they need to their specifications. And then the manufacture or fabrication, where I think fabrication might mean something like constructing something from repaired components. And so as we'll talk about a little later, Jason can talk about this, you have, and it's addressed in the project narrative, you have a clean room facility where the silicone components are manufactured, and you also have the CNC machine room where the plastic rods are fabricated. There is no emissions from the fabrication and the molding processes. The activities are not generally or commonly considered hazardous or noxious themselves.
We've a lot to get through, but I'm just going to throw off some questions early on that. You said there are no emissions. The document that was sent to us, the plan, the special permit said no emissions. Whomever might answer this question, that seems like an encouraging statement, but I have to question it. How do you heat, if you are heating, plastic and have no emissions? And it's not that I'm doubting you, it's that I'd like for everyone else to know what you could answer. How are there no emissions?
John, I think.
Can we regret this?
Anyone?
Okay. And would you come up to us? Sure. Absolutely. So the molding process with silicone, it's a part A and a part B, similar to what epoxy that you base them together. This particular product is activated by temperature. Some are chemically activated, like in epoxy, this is based on temp. So room temperature before you combine these components, A and B, they're in a very thick gel form in sealed 55-gallon drums. The material is heated through hydraulic hoses into a mold, and that mold is heated to, depending on the process, upwards of 300 degrees. That doesn't create any fumes or emissions. It's used to, it's not a plastic that you're melting and infusing, like a radio frequency weld between plastic parts. It's not like that. It's just used as a catalyst to cure the silicone into a rubber from the liquid rubber parts.
So no smoke comes off of it?
No.
You don't vent any of this?
No, actually, I mean, in our clean room, these are ISO 7 level clean rooms.
What does that mean?
Uh, ISO 7, the old days, used to be classified as 10,000, which is 10,000 particles per million, when you're doing your sampling with filtration and you measure the particles floating around. So it's a very, very clean environment. Our technicians are gowned head to toe. If, you know, picture Hubble telescope, you know, that type of garb that they wear. So fumes, heat, all of these things, they're very, very sensitive to because they're in a cold environment. So we're very, very mindful of what happens inside the room and outside the room as well because some air is fed in, some air is recirculated. So it's all pretty much the closed loop inside the building.
So there's no fans, no venting, your employees don't complain about smell even inside? You described a one and two process in epoxy. Normally, when I think epoxy, I think of a very heavily sensitized product.
Absolutely, that's a chemical reaction.
So that smell does exist, but it's only in that?
It doesn't smell at all. The liquid silicone rubber components don't really have any odor to them.
That's the answer.
Yeah. And there is, there is fans because it's a clean room. You have HEPA filters in the ceiling grid, they're two foot by four foot, they take air, they push them through this very, very, it's 99.99% filtration, so it catches every single particle. And some of it is fresh air taken from the building space, and some of it recirculates from the clean room back through the HEPAs into the clean room.
So in the ISO 7 room, there are emissions. You are treating them so that no emissions leave the building. You say there's no emissions, what you mean is that no emissions are leaving your building? Is that what you're saying?
Again, there's no odor, there's nothing that we deal with. I couldn't, I can't compare it to boiling water, but it would be a similar thing. There's no, there's no odors or anything that are created by the process. That would be very, very difficult for people to work in.
Does your product require any state licensing? Is there any process of litigation for odor that you're required to follow in your manufacturing process?
None whatsoever.
Does anyone have any questions?
I got a question.
Just specifically because I haven't allowed her to go much further.
No, not enough.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, toss it. Thank you.
What about noise, the CNC machines? There used to be a bottling plant there, right? Wasn't there?
No, that property originally, well, it was all part of Tom Lumber way back in the day.
Okay.
It was seven acres of land, and it was all on like Ted Town.
Maybe I'm thinking of Overlook having bottled plant.
So when we moved in there, let's see, 15 years ago, it was an oxygen company, Link Air.
Okay.
It was, it was at the time where they were putting the fiber optic up another mass bike. So there was small business there with vans with cherry pickers that do the installation, and it was united personnel. So we did go with the cherry picker section.
Could it have been the cannabis? Because I think they were approved, but I don't think they ever built out of that.
Oh, yeah. Right. But noise, the CNC machine, do you know how many, how loud that is?
I don't, I know that we were, you know, in the environment, there's protective equipment, there's, you know, earplugs and things, protective eyewear and whatnot that people wear when they're in that environment. You don't hear anything outside the building.
You don't hear anything outside the building?
And again, you could walk up to the door, and you would never hear anything, let alone the inner market.
Because I think the daycare center around there, right?
Right.
That's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Eric, you had a question?
Yeah, what kind of extent of, you have to make this thing to make it a, like a white room? Maybe they're going to be spending a fortune trying to seal this whole thing all up, aren't they?
We're going to be building a modular clean room. It's going to run upwards of a half million dollars by the time all is said and done. Yeah.
And you don't have any kind of state inspections or any, you got a pass or anybody coming up with that?
As far as inspections, it will be, from what I can tell at this point, it'll be local building inspector, work for the actual construction and whatnot, and then we have to go through a process internally to validate that clean room to certify that it's at the level of cleanliness to be claimed. There's a whole bunch of recurring, every quarter we have to retest and recertify.
And that's where you're.
Yeah, this is, it's an expensive process, an ongoing expensive process. But again, as Rebecca said, we've been at 193 doing it for 15 years.
Yes, and just to be clear, you're moving 200 feet from your current operation.
Right. We're doing the exact same thing, just making the office, it will be bigger, and the break room is bigger, and the conference room is bigger, and the shop is bigger, and the clean room is bigger.
You're just utilizing the opportunity of your neighbor vacating, and you're really moving, I've been looking here, 200 feet from your current operation, doing the same thing.
If any of you members complain, both of them are me.
To my knowledge, there are complaints for the existing facility. And many of the board members that were participants in the original permit for the cannabis, I think that was later renamed as Pleasant Trees, will remember this gentleman standing and speaking before us on that project, us and a butter, I believe.
Right. And that was concerning because the only experience that we had at that time, early on, you know, them being sort of the first applicant, was what happened in North Hampton and the craziness that, you know, ensued from that. And I know there was a lot of requirements that Pleasant Trees or Pavantine, the landowner, had to meet those requirements. Then opening last, I think, with that amount of property, it just never had the traffic. And I was a fan of theirs. I mean, they were good guys, they were, you know, we were good neighbors.
I remember well, you were in a butter who treated the process with respect.
Absolutely.
I'll, I'll let us continue at this point. I held you off too long standing.
Oh, no, that's okay. John, do you want to talk anymore about what you mean by late?
Um, yeah, we can do it briefly. So we can just switch, switch, yeah, switch around a little bit. So the components that we make are used specifically in packaging of liquid drug products, injectable drug products, so anything that goes into a vial, like a COVID vaccine, or a chemo drug, or goes into an IV pouch, EpiPens, pre-fill syringes, transdermal patches, there's a liquid filling. If you think like a Laverne and Shirley, where their beer bottles go by on the assembly line, instead of beer bottles, they're vials with vaccines. So it's, it's very similar, that high-speed automated filling, and we make the components of the fluid path that support that operation. And we sell products all over the world. We're in China, we're in Europe, I haven't gone to South America yet, but the companies grow considerably, you know? When we moved into Will Bundy's place, it was me and my wife and a desk and a laptop and fax machine, you know, a 1,600 square feet that I was never going to need again after 10 years at home, and then the next room came available, and we bought that, we rented that, and then this other facility became available, and it's just grown and grown and grown. So we went from three people at Will's place to 25 people now, to come in from all over the place. So it's, it's a growing business, it's grown every single year. COVID was a big help and a big stress all at the same time, but it got our product out there and it generated a lot more business. So, yeah, that's it. It's weird, but that's what we do.
Thank you. So John talked a little bit about business operations. He said about 25 employees, they're, they operate during normal business hours, 8:00 to 4:30 is the usual shift. A couple people come, you know, between 7:00 and 8:00 to open the building and prepare. The deliveries, I actually thought this was it, it was not what I expected when I first started talking to John about this, business and operations. The deliveries are small, you're not getting big tractor-trailer trucks in there, you might get a tractor-trailer truck delivering cardboard boxes, maybe once or twice a quarter, but other than that, the deliveries are conducted by your regular FedEx and UPS delivery vans, and they come within the normal schedule of what they do at my law firm, in the morning and in the afternoon. And so the business operations themselves are fairly quiet for a manufacturing facility. So under your zoning ordinance 12.7.3.2, there are uses for which a special permit is granted, the criteria that they have to satisfy. And so I'll just kind of go through these, these are all addressed in the project narrative, but to the extent that there is public joining us, and just for purposes of the public record, I'd like to go through some of them quickly, and if you want to talk about them in more detail, we're happy to talk about those. So we have special district requirements set forth in Section 7 of the bylaws. These are not applicable. There's no aquifer protection district, no flood plain, manhattan river zone, or smart overlay. Obviously, this is not a solar facility or a telecommunications facility, so those other special district requirements do not apply. There are development methods that are required in Section 8. None of these are applicable because we're not a planned business development, we're not part of a planned industrial development, because this is not a development of multiple facilities and uses, it's just one use at this single site. The other development methods are related to residential or highway business development, although we do have some part of the property zoned highway business, that's the parking, which is an accessory use serving the primary principal use, which is located in the industrial zone, so that does not apply either. There are land use regulations set forth in Section 10. Some of these are applicable. There is a signage requirement. Here, we're not making any additions to signage, and if anything, there might be only some removals. So if you drive on Route 10 now, out by the access drive, leading into the post office and 193, 195, there is a large sign which references Overlook. That doesn't need to change. There's a sign over it which references Pleasant Trees and cannabis, and the only change anticipated is to remove that. And I also know that, and John is aware, that if there are, if there's new signage planned, he'll go before the, I think it's your building department that permits signage, but no changes other than possibly removals of signage.
I think it is, and you noted here zoning ordinance, Section 10, that you'll follow. Is that a quick question? I just want to confirm, you're not replacing that outer sign with your own name, Pleasant Trees, you're removing that upper portion. What about on the building itself? Do you have any signage on the building?
There's no signage on it. There is a Pleasant Trees banner, so I believe that will be removed, but there's no signage planned at this time for the building.
You're not promoting walk-in, there's no walk-in customers, is that correct?
There are no walk-in customers, correct. If you go in, as I did.
I love it.
It's pretty strictly, pretty strictly managed, there are locked doors. For off-street parking, and Tony might touch upon this later if needed, but as you'll see on the site plans, there is extensive parking available on the site already, over 100 spaces, including handicapped accessible spaces. Our requirements are for 26 spaces, which was calculated in accordance with the manufacturing use, based on the number of shift.
Take a moment here, I looked at this and the tables, and I agree with that number, I just want to check with the planning department. John, does that number of 26, can you double-check my math like Vanessa?
I will do that, and I would also trust the chart that the applicant submitted. I think the reality is just that the property has spaces in excess of that, but I think it meets the minimum requirement, so.
Sounds good, please continue.
In terms of loading for land use regulations, here we'll have specific loading docks for deliveries. Again, those are minimal, as will be addressed in some of the traffic conversation, although that's not going to be very extensive. Instead of the delivery vehicles coming in through, one through the access road from the post office up of Route 10, they will now be instructed to go through industrial parkway and access the back access route. And so we think that's actually a more appropriate access route.
So is that, is that road, I haven't been back there in a while, is that road off industrial develops? Is it, is it a passable drive?
It is paved.
It is paved. And the gate, there's a gate there. Is it worth the access prior?
It's actually a new gate that was put in when the Pleasant Trees project was built out, it's a swing gate. We're going to put a sliding gate in just so it's easier for us to open and close during the day, but everything is pretty much remaining the same. And we're instructing, as Rebecca said, our delivery people to utilize industrial parkway and alleviate some of the traffic out on Route 10.
So just deliveries on employee access, they would still come off of Route 10?
We're going to make it available to our employees as well, especially for leaving in the afternoon. I don't know if any of you guys have ever gone out at 4:30 in the afternoon to try to get out of Route 10. It's pretty daunting. So a lot of our employees would come out industrial parkway and take a right onto O'Neil, a particularly low sort of area. Others would take a left up to Route 10, and then the mechanical light would be able to control that traffic flow. So we'd actually be alleviating some of that burden coming out onto Route 10, the light-controlled driveway.
You're triggering some memories. I remember we're talking about this specifically when we were dealing with Pleasant Trees, and the community, as I recall, helped me out, was mostly concerned with, this was the others' concern, the flow of cannabis purchasers coming through the back, it was part of the daycare that was on the side. This is a different kind of flow of traffic, and it's a small volume, so I mean, something we discussed that, but for me, I don't think that's any near as much a problem.
I agree.
With the possible exception of the fact that twice a quarter, there's big trucks, they're used, I'm not sure if it's there anymore. Further down, there was a storage facility.
It's further up.
Is it further up?
Yeah. There's a lot of.
I think it's probable there's trucks coming through that whole area.
I think, although many, if not all, of those businesses would probably have a similar vehicle.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any concerns about, or like me, are they coming to the conclusion that that's just?
Yeah, I think that. It's apples and oranges.
Right. Let me move on.
Yeah.
Thank you. There are environmental performance standards set forth in Section 10, as we talked about before, the use does not create any emissions. There are no outdoor changes to the facility or site, no significant changes, other than, as you heard, you know, maybe a change to the gate access and then some window installation and removal of some garage doors on the building. So in terms of no changes to the outdoor facility or site, we don't have erosion or runoff concerns or glare, and there's no change to impervious surfaces that would increase runoff. There's no storage of hazardous materials, and any of the silicone that's used, which is not considered hazardous, is disposed of using a certified waste disposal company. There's, as John already addressed, no excessive noise, no offensive vibrations, and no changes to the impervious surfaces.
Quick question, and I'm with you. You said there's no other external changes other than the five doors being brought to one and some windows being added, from what I correctly understood. But I see on the map here, this particular one is long, probably 100, there's a feature that says future exterior water feature. Is that a potential change upcoming?
Yeah, so on that particular plan, and I was going to speak to this when I stopped to.
I'm only waiting.
Okay, so I'll speak to that shortly.
Okay. That's fine, continue. I'm just trying to catch these things as you say them.
No, and I appreciate that, I did not catch that, so thank you. There are other points that need to be satisfied under 12.7.3.2, but none of these are applicable. They deal with home occupation, shipping of farm animals, et cetera. And then all other applicable requirements and standards of this ordinance need to be met. We think we've met them. I am skipping over the site plan standards, just because I'm going to have, ask Tony to jump in for that. But before we talk about the specific site plan standards and why we think each of those criteria have been met, I want to point out first those items under which we're requesting a waiver from, from site plan or otherwise. So there is required a detailed traffic impact statement. Again, and as we talked about, this is substantially the same use conducted with the same degree of intensity, the same number of employee trips, the same number of delivery trips, and in fact, we think it'll be. And in fact, we think it'll be, any traffic impacts, because there are always impacts from a car or a delivery truck, no matter what, we think they'll be lessened by the two access routes now as opposed to just the one impact, the one access route. We think it's appropriate to determine these impacts based on the historical experience. And as Mr. Zerbas has mentioned, we have not had any complaints or issues with the existing business operating at 193 Norton Hampton Street. There is the same number of motor vehicle trips. And so while the threshold for requiring a traffic impact study is based on the size of the use and facility and where we otherwise might tip that threshold because we're over the, I believe it's 10,000 square feet. Here, we are conducting the same use, and so that has been historically conducted. And so we're asking for a waiver from having to conduct a traffic impact study.
We'll discuss that a little later.
Okay. We're also requesting a waiver from building elevation plans and elevation plans for all exterior facades and for pollution prevention plan. Both of the rationale for requesting a waiver for both, from both of those requirements is that, again, there are almost no exterior changes to the building that would impact the exterior facade other than, as Jason will talk about, maybe improving it just by virtue of having some windows on a building, which is right now just a solid wall. And the other reason is that there's no development outside in the exterior portion of the site. The building was renovated and constructed in accordance with those plans that was permitted less than five years ago. I had, we had put in the, in the project narrative a request for a waiver from exterior lighting. But Tony, actually, we did submit plans showing the exterior lighting. Again, it's not changing from what was done with the pleasantries facility. It's just, we're keeping it as is. The dimensions of the height and floor area, 12.7.5.1E. We originally also requested a waiver from that, but we have floor areas now and we're requesting acceptance of the floor plans as is. And Jason will talk to that in a little bit. So, I think now I'll turn it over to Tony.
I just want to make sure I have a summary so that I can keep it with me. Because this has changed a little bit. You actually provided information from, with the narrative said, well, going to be there. As you just indicated, it's just a waiver for the traffic impact study and for, help me with the verb.
Building elevation plans and elevation plans for all exterior facades.
Those are the two waivers you're asking, the pollution prevention. Of the point three waivers you're asking. Thank you.
Well, four, because building elevation and elevation plans for all exterior sides are too different.
Separate, yeah.
They're similar, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And to the extent that the floor plans don't show the height, they show the floor area but not the height, we would request a waiver from the criteria in that.
I suspect there's a little bit more coming on this, but I just want to make this statement to the board. And I guess you're picking up on this already. But the reason you're requesting waiver for this is largely because we have a plan for some of the projects we've just developed that has all these materials. In a way, we're not really waiving. We're saying just reference all the information already provided. Just, I mean, it is a waiver technically how it goes legally, but realistically, it's not like we don't have this information. We have a very easily referenced document that shows what this building has and discussed traffic for a different use, which was way higher than here. Because of the building elevations, et cetera. So, we're not really missing, just making that statement.
Yeah. No, thank you. I think that's a better way of characterizing.
Okay. Please continue.
Sure. So, I was going to let Tony talk a little bit about the site plans that you submitted. Jeff, can you?
Thank you. Tony Cappacetti, Hays Engineering, 603 Salem Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts. I remember some of the faces here from when we permitted pleasantries. The project is pretty much unchanged from what you've previously seen before. It's just the change in use. I have to say that, having been out there to inspect what was done, I'm pleased with the way it came out. I think the board did a great job permitting the project. What we're going to is from a more intensive use. But we speculated, you know, traffic-wise, about 100 vehicles in the peak hour. Now, we're looking at about 105 vehicles all day for the site with about 12 vehicle trips in the peak hour for the proposed use. It's a, it's a significant downsized for the intensity of use for this site. Fully landscaped, the lighting, as Rebecca said, was previously proposed, DocSky compliant lighting, a little bit more coverage than you would get on a normal site, about one and a half to two candle feet over the entire parking area. But I was talking to John Moore today about it. He says that, you know, he sits in the second floor office and the lights, because they're DocSky compliant, fully shielded, he doesn't even notice them. The site was designed for an 18-wheeler to be able to circulate the site and exit and leave. Not that that will happen more than once or twice a quarter, but circulation-wise, it is, it has definitely been designed adequately for that. It's overparked. However, in the original submission, we reduced the impervious area at the site by almost three-quarters of an acre. That's one of the reasons why we don't have the pollution prevention plan is because all the site work has been done. That pollution prevention plan from the previous site was adhered to. And the work, work was done in a workman-like manner and is in substantial compliance to what was previously permitted. So, there were stormwater enhancements provided. There were no catch basins before. We had a deep-sump catch basins and some particle separators to increase treatment as well as reducing the impervious surfaces. You know, I think this is a great project. John was excellent to work with as an abutter and, you know, took great care and pride in the neighborhood. He's an abutter on two sides of this project. There's not much more I can say about the site that wasn't discussed thoroughly in the previous application. So, I'd open it up to any questions from the board if there are any.
Question. Another question. Is there any plans or mechanisms in place for maintenance of those stormwater structures? And indeed, some catch basins will fill up over time, as will the separators. And once they do, they're basically, you know, no longer useful. So, what's the maintenance? I mean, it's usually just the back truck, right? But is there a timeline? Is there someone that's going to be held accountable? Sure it happens?
There was a long-term pollution prevention operations and maintenance plan submitted under the last special permit. And I believe that was condition that it be adhered to. I can provide John with a copy of that and update the name on it. But I don't think there'd be any issue with maintaining that condition for the next special permit. And it has the timelines, recommendations, and methodology to clean those best management practices.
I'm going to lock that in. We add that as a condition to this, that you maintain the condition you're willing?
Absolutely.
And I think that's a solid condition.
You're right.
Yeah. That's a point. That's good.
Great point. Great. Anything else? Anyone else have a question?
Yeah. Or actually, the loading docks, you said there were going to be an installation of a couple loading docks. Do we know where those are? Or did I miss hear that from the narrative now?
So, they're the same loading docks that were approved under the previous plan. So, they're at the, the plan right or rear of the building off of Industrial Way. I believe there were four or five doors on the back of that building.
Okay. Then disregard my comment. I thought Eckhart proposed, they're existing.
There was five previously. We're filling in four, and John is maintaining use one.
Then disregard my comment. Thank you.
Which I'm either for. Always fine.
Yeah, thank you.
I think for all that, ends our engineering questions. I know I have some general questions, but if you have more than you want, please. I think you're going to read through maybe some of the other sections and how they apply.
Yeah. Well, I wanted to give Jason a chance to come up and briefly describe the floor plans. So, I'll do that now. Tony, thanks.
Absolutely. So, thank you, Rebecca, again. Jason Newman, I'm with Beads and Company Architects, Springfield, Massachusetts. But I'm also a new Santhin resident, so. So, these are, of course, early schematic plans for the building. I think, you know, as Rebecca said, the salient point is that we're reusing the building and its current size and shape and loosely following its original organization with the warehouse becoming our manufacturing, demonstrated by the salmon color. And then the previous retail space demonstrated by the blue color is going to become John's administrative offices and, you know, where he works every day. So, again, the total gross square footage of the structure is roughly 15,500 square feet. The salmon color is 7,980 square feet. Oh, I'm sorry, the green color, I should of course talk about that. That's the location of the clean rooms that we've been talking about in detail. That's the heart of John's operation. That accounts for roughly 2,000 square feet. And then the blue force, the offices, 5,570 square feet. So, again, this building went through an intensive renovation between 2019 and mid-2021. Many of the codes that are still in place today were in place then. And so we got a real leg up on a code-compliant building, generally speaking and substantially speaking with its existing condition today. The building has a fire suppression, a fire protection system. It has fire alarm system. According to the code calculation, by the building code, we're actually going to have less technical past building than we might have had in pleasantries going from retail to office. So, there's plenty of exits. It's in its current condition, a very safe building. So, we're going to be modifying those systems that are already in place. And it's really, you know, a head start for John, having not had the expense of putting in a sprinkler system. But so the exterior changes, to be a little bit more pointed about it. So, there's a couple of things that we're interested in. First and foremost, this is today a windowless building. John and his employees don't want to work in a windowless building. Those were infilled by pleasantries, and I assume at the time for security reasons. But we're going to introduce some new windows. So, we're looking at poking in new just metal windows to match the doors that are already on the facility along the back of the building, some on the sides. These are, of course, the offices and the conference room. And a couple along this walkway here, which will just bring some natural light into those circulation spaces, which will really make the quality of that building much better than it is now. We are shifting around a couple of doors on the facade. So, these doors used to be, if you can see those, that little white infill, which is being represented there, we're shifting that door down just because that's the way it works with our interior space plan. And we're also introducing a new double door here, an oversized double door, just in case John has to get something large in from the front parking lot. He doesn't have to wheel it all the way around to the back of the building. He has that quick access. But again, as it was mentioned, the primary mode of deliveries is the back of the building. The last thing I want to speak about, just in terms of exterior changes, if we can maybe just zoom into this photo, I just want to point out.
Yeah. I can't get any closer.
That's, that's, that's fine. Some of the siding is failing. It's been taking on water and it's starting to peel. So, we are looking at replacing some siding, but we're looking at it in similar materials. So, I think we're considering either a metal panel or wooden board and baton type of material should we go and resize this building. But, you know, generally speaking, the smaller building here is a fiber cement siding, which is held up. This is more or less just plywood. That's just, so we might have to address some of those facades of the building.
The water feature?
The water feature, of course. So, that's John's creativity at work. Between those two existing entrances, you'll see this blue trim, which used to be, I assume, a landscape that the first time I saw it was empty, and I wasn't a customer, so I don't know what it was.
Second picture from that bottom.
Of course. The second picture, there's a blue frame between the two doors.
The pleasantries side was located in there.
Gotcha. So, thank you. So, John's creativity at work, you know, this is his business. He's very proud of his business. That's kind of our special moment for how we come into the building. We haven't really nailed down what that was, but we're experimenting with, like, could that be a small water feature that, you know, maybe has the overflow effect? So, I don't, I think that sounds awesome, but it doesn't affect us. I mean, considered koi palm.
Yeah.
Right.
No, that's great.
It is something.
I had to check.
We're still developing it, so I can't say for sure what it is here today. But that's generally what we're looking at there.
So, let me ask you about the flow of the inside of the building. The two of you might be the right person for this. You've got 25 employees, a few show up early to turn on the lights. The only question I really have about the inside, having covered everything else, is about trash or your dumpster, and what kind of materials are you getting right up?
Dumpster's on the back left corner. There's a concrete pad.
Yep.
Where dumpsters have been present with the past businesses. It's, we currently have a cardboard dumpster and a trash dumpster that I feed every Friday.
You'll be using the same ones, just bringing them over?
Just shifting them over, yeah.
What's in there? Sorry?
Yeah. It's about basic industrial trash. You know, there's plastics. We got it supplies in plastic bags, you know, kitchen refuse, bathroom, you know, paper towels and whatnot. It's.
Not toxic or not just in any way?
No, no. And as Rebecca said, with regard to us getting rid of outdated silicone or something that, because we have expiration dates, we have, you know, a company that we partnered with that's registered with best EPA, you know, they track everything and everything is filled out appropriately. So, there's not a lot that we, that we deal with.
Sharp sell it or something?
No, nothing like that.
So, for anything that requires the manifest or like a clean harbors or somebody, you know, that typically has its own storage and handling requirements, that wouldn't be going in the dumpster. You'd hope that's cut somewhere inside.
We actually.
Like a universal waste. It's like a Recra, you know, all this Recra stuff.
In the, in the, in the current facility, we have a metal building in the back.
Yeah.
Where we, we keep those drums until they get picked up, and they're in the appropriate pallets. There's leakage. It gets caught in the pallet and things like that. So, we got into that many, many years ago.
Sure.
Didn't know that we had to, and then we realized we had to. So, it's all part of, you know, this has been, as I said, I started in the house, you know, 30 years ago, over 30 years ago. And I've grown and learned as, as we've come along, and now we want a water feature.
Yeah.
I mean, when we sat down and talked about it, you know, and Jason and his group, like, anything else you want, like water feature would be cool. And nobody said no.
Is the board having questions about the interior? Any more questions about the interior?
Not the interior. No, it seemed to make sense to me.
I just have a question. So, are you moving entirely from 193, 195, or are they both going to be in operation?
We're going to move, we're going to move the majority of the operation to 195. It's important to us personally and to our customers that we have redundancy. If something happens to the main manufacturing area, what happens? We're sole suppliers to many drug companies around the world. If we go down, I'm covered. I have insurance. My employees get paid. But drug products can't be packaged. I mean, we get calls, there's no, there's no more plasma in the system. We need, there's emergency things that take place. So, if there's a redundancy factor, we maintain the original facility at a reduced level. And possibly, and this is something that Jeff and I's kicked around a little bit, potentially an incubator space or a co-op space where the local schools, I've talked to the folks at Mass MEP, I can hook you up with professors here and students, grad students. They need a clean room for an experiment. They need a machine shop to be able to do things. So, we definitely want to maintain that space. I might break off the second floor as office space, independent of the rest, but that's pretty open for conversation a little bit down the road.
So, are you thinking about any modifications to the fence between the two buildings? Or is it just people will just commute around the fence to another building?
I mean, everybody will just go to the, to the other building.
Yeah.
We did discuss pulling the fence down. Again, it's my company, but it's also my property.
Yep.
And there's the 193 property, the 195, and on the backside on industrial parkway are personal storage units.
Yes.
So, there are three different properties already fenced off. I have an exit strategy at some point in my life. So, I try and sell seven acres altogether, or the property's already broken up, but I can sell three different properties.
So, no modification.
No modification. It's hard to that. It's an expensive fence.
It is.
We don't want to take it down and put it back up.
So, it, it sounds to me, from what I heard, that there's a statement that you'll maintain the existing facility currently at a reduced, possibly at a reduced level. You may find some of it of other uses, but those uses seem very much in line with the current use. That's the statement I'm hearing. So, I just want to state that if you were to change the use significantly on the other building, you would decide to replace it at a restaurant. and, and put a restaurant in there, that would probably trigger a special permit.
I am too old for that, but that was a dream early on.
Okay.
No problem about it.
All right. Any other questions of the inside or outside of the building? Did you have more that you wanted to? Okay. So do you want to go through some more of what you have or?
The only thing I had left was to really kind of recite again under 12.7.9, why we think all of the criteria have been satisfied and the findings that need to be made in order for issuance of a special permit have been met. But I also don't want to.
I'm getting eyes from the whole rest of the board.
Yeah, you don't need to hear that from me.
So, so I, I think it's normally part of my process to read through that and say that we accept it and I have to do that as part of this.
Right.
Um, so I'll reference so that my board doesn't implode, um, that as I go through this. Um, outside of the, as I can see in here, the section of the document you're, you're referring to, is there anything else that you wanted to present?
No, I think that's it. Um, thank you all and thank you for your questions. It, they were, they were good and we appreciate the opportunity.
Appreciate the time, really. It was very exciting for me personally, you can imagine.
I absolutely.
Being able to move into this bigger place and, you know, give our employees a much, much nicer environment to work in. And I promised my clean room folks I'd give them windows so they know if it's snowing or raining or light or dark out.
I think everybody.
They appreciate that.
And I think it's a great example of a local business growing and succeeding. And I, you know, applaud you for that.
Yeah, it's always been great being in the city and working in a collaborative manner with City Hall and the various building inspectors that I've come and gone, so to speak, but it's, um, it's always been a positive process.
So we have, um, two things that I want to do. One is I want to talk to the public and see if I can get any comments from them. And then I want to, as the board, review the conditions we have and then read through the findings. So let's start with the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak about this project? See, we have one person that came in now. Anyone online? Jeff, you see anyone?
I don't see anyone signaling to raise their hand, so.
Okay. So then I'm going to move forward talking about our conditions. We talked about one condition, I think that Danny brought up, the maintenance of the, of the water system. And you're agreeing to take, stormwater system, and you're agreeing to take on the, um, the maintenance conditions that were in the last special permit.
Yes, for the, for Pleasantry's, I think it was a verbiage at the point. Yeah.
Um, then we have four waivers, uh, which will need to be noted in there. Um, and Jeff, I, does anyone here in the board disagree with allowing those waivers? I'm, I think they're reasonable.
I agree.
And I think that we might want to, in addition to stating that we allow the waivers because we find, or rather that our finding there, Jeff, to help you out, is such that the prior, um, findings, uh, and documentation and the original special permit provided those details for us. And maybe reference that. We really have.
And the current conditions are either unchanged or less intrusive than those approved. So it's kind of like that law of transposition.
Couldn't agree more. I mean, this is really over built for, for their purpose. Uh, is that in any way helpful to you hopefully, Jeff?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I, I think along with the way the applicant summarized the, the waivers, I think the board concurrents with that, and that's fine for the decision. So it makes sense.
I'm going to read through, uh, 12.7.9, um, and just as we normally do, I am going to summarize as we've adopted that methodology some time ago. Uh, so A, conformance of the zoning ordinance and other laws and regulations. I think this absolutely does that. I don't have an issue there. If anyone on the boards that are reading through these has an issue with any more comments, they step in. B, it's protection of city amenities and abutting properties. Uh, this, all their changes are entirely within the building as they've stated themselves. I, I don't see that there's any effect to that. Minimization of traffic and safety impacts at Mass, the MIZ in particular, and pedestrian movement within the site. Uh, obviously they're using much less traffic. The hours from eight to 4:30 are minimal use, minimal deliveries. I think this falls well within, uh, acceptable standards for that. D, the adequacy of methods and disposal of sewage and reuse and drainage of water. This would just indicate that they don't have any noxious or hazardous, uh, disposal issues. Adequacy of protecting wetlands, water sheds, aquifers and well areas. The recently changed stormwater system is way better than it was. It's like brand new. So I think we're good there. Mitigation of adverse impacts on city resources. I don't think there are any. Provision for loading, unloading and parking. Actually, can I go back to that for a second?
Yeah.
Um, is there, I mean, I understand that when this was a cannabis facility, then we were, we were talking about the fact that there was going to be a significant amount of water use. Or is there a significant amount of use of city, uh, amenities, water to create any of this product?
Actually, it was interesting when we went in there, there's a two-inch vein coming into the building because it was going to be grow as well.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, it's just bathrooms, break room.
Okay, so. Good question. Uh, so provisions for loading and unloading and parking. There's way more parking needed, almost three quarters more than is to be used. Development integration into the landscape. It was recently re-landscaped as part of that process. Minimization of removal of existing vegetation. You're not removing any vegetation as part of this process, et cetera. Development consistency with surroundings. Uh, it's already a big improvement. Has that fence. I think it's in good standing. And pollution prevention. You're not making any pollution. I'd like to point out a good place. Yes, absolutely. There's no need for a mobile for any parking area there.
Um, there is based on what the code is and I think we have four spaces.
Yes.
Based on the number of parking spaces.
Yes, so, so that's correct. The, the number of parking spaces is based on the total number of parks. This, if we were to, you know, change the parking lot, John's need probably be somewhere in the round from one or two. But, you know, I've, I've, I've thought of this, but it's a good point, but it, we had to put it in for the herbology and pleasantries that had a bunch of spots. And then ensuring no nuisance. And as Harry asked, there was no loud noises. As you noted, there's no noxious emissions. I think we're all good. With that, we've covered all the bases. Um, before we vote, I just want to give one question for you. We don't have a draft decision for you in advance if the board is about to vote or who. If, uh, it'll take some time, I think, for, for Jeff to develop that. Do you have any sense about how long that might be?
Uh, a couple of weeks probably, but I, I think that what the conversation has been is just understanding the board's vote is very informative for the applicant to know that they have the vote and then we have to put it into writing, which could take a couple of weeks. So I think that's about what we're looking at.
And I would like to apologize. It's not Jeff's fault. He's amazing. We were understaffed. We lost our sus.
I know, we want to listen.
Yeah, so. All right.
The one, it's like, so it's, uh, as you would say, belts and suspenders, one condition that we would probably want to add. So you have the operation and management plan for stormwater and then just that the, the use and facilities is sort of substantially in accordance with the plans, the plans that you provided. And we would just have that as a condition just for clarity. So all the plans have been updated to reflect overlooks, you know, site, the interior and that sort of thing. So that would be just, that would be a next condition number one. And then condition number two would be, um, referencing the stormwater, uh, plans that were previously approved. And then you would be abiding by that, um, those man, the maintenance provisions of that, right? So those are the two conditions that.
Yeah, I should have remembered. The first one has become a standard that we throw in basically saying that you're abiding that everything in the plan is right. So absolutely, you're good with that.
Absolutely.
I'm looking for a motion.
Uh, so I move to approve a special permit for Realik Industries, LLC, to establish the use of the general manufacturing. He's not commonly considered hazardous or noxious.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Oh, sorry. With the two conditions and the, uh, and the, uh, four, uh, waivers, waivers.
All right, I'll do that again. All in favor? Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? I think Jesse had to abstain.
Yes, just.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Sorry to congrats.
See that one? And I don't think we have any announcements or any other business. Is that right, Jeff?
That's correct.
Hey, so I'm looking for another motion.
That will.
I'll motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor? All right, thank you.